Welcome everyone to the December 7, 2022. Planning Board meeting being conducted by Zoom. Start with the alphabetical roll call of who's here.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Kevin Hine present.
Okay. Also with this is Lauren Lind, our town planner, and Carolyn Murray, our town council. And I believe out there somewhere is Angela Guiso, maybe not tonight. Taking our minutes. So since we do have people in the audience, Lauren, if you could explain to everyone how they can participate tonight?
Sure, certainly. There is going to be a dedicated public comment period for each item on the agenda. We asked that you use the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen. You can write, insert written comment, or you can ask to just address the board, which we would promote you to utilize your microphone camera. And we just do ask that at the beginning of any comment, you state your name and address, and if you're not a town resident, your affiliation.
Okay, thank you. All right, our first order of business tonight is an approval not required application for 465 Jewels on Road. I believe Rich Henderson is with us tonight, Attorney Henderson. At the request of one of our members, Carolyn, could you just give us a brief primer, whatever you call it, on what A and R is all about?
Sure. Well, this, this is not your typical A and R plan. And, and I, you know, there are, you know, there's, there's basically the definition of a subdivision, and then we back out of it, what a subdivision is not. And typically, when the planning board is entertaining subdivision applications, you're looking at whether or not the lots shown have frontage on a way and what type of way it happens to be, and it has to be one of three ways recognized by the statute. But the plan that is before you tonight has nothing to do with that aspect of the definition. Instead, it's this very last clause of the subdivision definition that talks about the division of a tract of land on which two or more buildings were standing when the subdivision control law went into effect, in this case in the town of Cohasset. And so the, in, into separate lots. So dividing those, that one lot with two buildings on it into two separate lots, on each of which one building remains standing, shall not constitute a subdivision. This is sometimes referred to as, you know, you know, there's a further exemption to the subdivision control law. We're not looking at frontage. We're not looking at lot size. We're certainly not making any sort of determination about whether or not this plan complies with zoning. We're simply looking at, were there two separate buildings on this lot at the time or prior to the subdivision control law coming in to effect in Cohasset, which I think is 1954, 55?
I think it's, I think it's February of 54.
Fifty-four, okay. So.
Before.
Right, or even just, just about at the same exact time zoning was, was being contemplated here. So looking at the materials and certainly, you know, Attorney Henderson can make the case for this particular parcel of land. But I do note that there is a notation on the plan that is invoking this exception to the subdivision definition. Excuse me. And as I said, we're not making any kind of a judgment as to whether or not these lots or the structures on the lots comply with zoning. If there's any further alterations of these parcels or of the structures on the parcels, they'll have to be dealt with, getting whatever appropriate zoning relief they may require. There's no, you know, protection that's afforded to these other than the fact that the subdivision control law will allow them to be separated out onto two separate lots because of the fact that there were two separate buildings there prior to the subdivision control law. So I see from the assessor's record, it's like, one of the, one of the properties dates back to 1880. The other one looks like it's either the 1920s, but there's also some reference to custom cape building in 2006. Maybe we'll hear a little bit more about that. But this is, you know, assuming that these buildings were in fact both on this parcel of land before 1954. It, it would be appropriate for the board to endorse this plan.
Okay, thank you. Before we proceed, I just want the record to reflect Chris Plex was here, although now he just disappeared. Is he still here? Okay, there he is. I'm sorry, he's right in the middle. And Deirdre says she's trying to get in, and I think she's in the attendee list right now.
I was just raising my hand to tell you about she'll be joining you.
Okay, good. So now we, we have a full board here tonight. All right, so Richard, Attorney Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Carolyn's explanation was perfect. The exception referred to in the application is the last exception. Two buildings on a single parcel land, which, both of which existed before subdivision. After the division, each of one is on a separate lot. According to the assessor's records, the smaller Cape Guest House was present as of 1925. And the main house was as of 1884. Those came straight from the assessor's records. I know it's hard to read, but I verified with Mary that it is 1925 that that building, that the guest, the guest house, coach house was built, and it's been there for 97 years, and the other building's been there for 160, 140 something years. So it falls clearly within the definition, the last exception under 81L, and there's not much more I can say. I relied on the plan. I relied on the records in the community as to the dates of the structures.
Do we have a plan that plants that real quick? Lauren, I don't know if you can pop one up of Richard, one of you.
There is a plan on the, on the planning board.
He did submit a plan.
Website open application section.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have mine, I have it open on my screen.
You want to share your screen and let us see it? I think it would just be for the benefit of anybody in the public here to see it.
Okay, can you see that?
Yeah, great. All right, thank you.
So, so that's the plan dated 2022. This is the main structure here, and that's the guest house.
Right, the, the, the one on the left, Lot A, is the 1925 building. And the Lot B on the right, the larger structure, it's the 1884 house.
Okay, and these, these back up to the water?
They do, they are, but yes, they do. Yep.
And, and the only nonconformity that's created, not that it wouldn't be allowed, is that the lots sizes are smaller than zoning, the setback.
Right.
The setback.
We did not compromise any setbacks, whatever nonconformities is, exist, exist. No new ones were created, but that's, it's totally irrelevant, but we didn't create any new ones.
No, no new nonconformities inside setback. Looks like you got plenty of room on front, front setback.
Right. Yep, in rear.
All right, and these are just being separated in ownership? Is that the whole point?
Not really. Ms. Jocelyn, who is the principal in the LLC that owns the, what's, what's called the Harrington Estate, is simply dividing it. She's not selling anything at this point. That's not her intention.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the board have any questions, comments about this? Thanks for sharing that, Clark. You can take.
Sure, sure. Yeah, the only thing would be if it's still going to be under the same ownership. Well, presumably they'd have to put it under a legal, separate ownership, or else the lots would merge again.
Not really. Once the, now, once, once it's signed. Now, it. A form A is unusual, a form A is unusual in that once it's signed, it doesn't have to be recorded until the landlord decides to record it, unlike a subdivision plan, which must be recorded within six weeks. But now there's no plans to do anything at this point, other than to create the lot line.
All right, and then if it were ever sold, then the, the guest house would have to create their own separate driveway or have a common driveway agreement.
I, I think that the intention would be that she would never sell it without creating a separate driveway for the other person. She doesn't want people driving through her yard if she doesn't own it.
Sure, that makes sense.
And then it would be a nonconforming lot that would probably have to go through things with zoning at the time.
Or zoning.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else from the board?
Just one question. Yeah, what is the utility of splitting the lot into? Why is the owner interested in doing that if it's not for the purposes of selling one of the two?
Well, she has a legal right to do it, and she may make decisions about her property going forward, but there's no intention. Now, she's lived there since 2004. She's lived in Cohasset most of her life, and she, she has the right to do it. And circumstances change, laws change, and she's protecting herself based on existing legal statutory rights right now.
I wasn't objecting to her right to do it. I was just interested in her motivation.
Other than preserving and exercising a legal right, there's none at this point in her life.
But it, it expedites the process if she, she wanted to sell one or both of these houses in the future, so.
Right.
Okay.
I have a question. I'd like to put it forward to Attorney Henderson. Can you speak to the utility status on these structures? Is there a common utility that services both buildings, perhaps from one building, or are they separate utilities as?
They're, they're, they're all separate, except that there is a sewer easement on a lesser, on a smaller lot that services the bigger lot, so there has to be an easement before it's sold, but you can't create easements on lots where you own both lots. If and when she should sell one of the lots, she would have to create an easement for the benefit of the house on whose property the sewer line is not located. That only gets done in a deed when it's conveyed.
Okay. Lauren or Carolyn, anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, anybody from the public have anything to, questions or comments about this? Looks like everybody's here for the next one. All right, I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
So move.
Second.
Okay. On favor, alphabetical roll call.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
I've nine, I.
Deirdre Hobbs, and I.
Chris Plex, I.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much for your time. Thanks, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Richard. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you, same to all of you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Lauren, will we have to come in and sign that? At some point?
Yes.
All right, so.
I'll be in touch.
Yeah, all right, just let us know when it's ready. All right, next up, we have. It says 6:45. Should we wait for two minutes? Do we have any minutes to approve?
You don't have any minutes to approve, and I'll just note, this is a continued here, or it's actually not a public hearing, but anytime you do, just for future reference on our agenda, we continue all of our hearings to 6:30 PM because it's the start time on the agenda. And then the actual agenda listed printed times are just approximate to give people a better idea of when they'll be. So you usually could start at any point, so long as your applicants were here.
Then, then we will start. All right, so this is a continued hearing about a common driveway application for Nate, 94 Black Horse Lane. If everyone recalls, it's been some months since we've seen this project. Issue, the main issue is whether we can entertain a common driveway application. We had an opinion from town council six months ago. We received Attorney Watzke's opinion last week. I hope everyone has read them. Say another issue in the background was about whether the single lot exemption as it uniquely exists under Iby Law applies, and councils seem to be in agreement of that, but, so I don't think we need to spend time discussing whether it applies or not, but the existence of the single lot exemption ties into the opinions that we have, so. We've waited a long time for this and have needed to bring this to a head, so I'd like to bring it to a head as quickly as we can tonight. So what I'd like to do, if everybody's okay with it, is I will allow Attorney Watzke to speak, to summarize and give the executive summary of his opinion for five, 10 minutes, and then we'll hear from Carolyn. And I think the threshold issue is we have to decide whether we're going to even entertain the common driveway application or not. So if there's no objection to that, you know, then after that, those presentations, I'll have time for the board to ask any questions or make comments, and likewise for members of the audience, and we do have a few here. So with no further ado, Matt, if you want to take the floor, just give us, you know, take five to 10 minutes, but listen. You're not, you're not arguing to the SJC tonight, so.
Well, the SJC has very strict timelines, so you have to, you have to really be prepared to give what presentation to them.
I just don't have a red light for you, so.
It may take a little bit more than five minutes, because I would like to have, have Brendan Sullivan give the board a quick review of, of how the lots were created and confirmed for you that, that the lots existed prior to the zoning as we.
Again, again, right now you and council are in agreement in that. I mean.
Well.
I, I dispute whether the single option, a single lot exemption applies to at least one of the lots, but I guess it's the one that has the house on it, so it's kind of irrelevant at this point, but I, I don't want to bog us down too, too long with things we don't.
Let me, let me do a quick, a quick summary, Tom, and, and, and perhaps you'll, you'll ask that we display the detail of the plan to, to show the changes. So we, we, we prepared, we prepared some materials.
All right, if you want to put the plan up on the screen while you're summarizing your legal opinion, feel free to do so.
I, I, I'll do that in a moment. That's a good idea, or I'll ask Carmen to do that. All right. That's for the common drive plan. I was going to start off with, with just the plan that shows the lots as they, as they preexisted. So very quick aside background, we do still have building permit applications pending with the building inspector. With the plan presented to him, that's not using a common drive, asking for building permits for each of these three preexisting lots. He has asked that we go through the stormwater permitting process at the Conservation Commission, and we're working on those applications, and we'll have those filed. Carolyn raised a, a number of different issues, and we've tried to address those. One issue that she raised is that if you have, I don't know, Carmen, okay, can you folks see Carmen's cursor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so Carolyn noted that Lot C had been changed in the past because of the addition of Lot B two. But she also questioned whether lots D, E, and 7A were preexisting lots. She had understood the, the plans that were recorded historically to have changed them in some way. We've had the surveyor provide his memo and to submit a plan reconfirming that the, that lots C and D were created in 1936. It was actually a recombination of lots that were created in 1926. Lots D and E have not changed at all in their boundaries since they were created in 1936. The 1961 plan that Carolyn referred to, the only lot line change that it made was to modify Lot C, so that Lot B two was added into Lot C, and it created Lot F from the, from the land that's now the development to the north of us. So lots DE and 7A, as well as 6A and 5 have not changed since they were created, some of those in 1926, and the rest CD and E were in 1936. So I think that addresses that issue. Carolyn sort of parsed the language of the, the common drive bylaw and said that, in her view, the, the common driveway needs to come off of one's existing frontage. The prior plan had the common driveway basically coming off of the, the end of the driveway where it's part of Lot. You don't have to go to that plan, Carmen. Well, I'll just talk about it, just to leave it here, leave it here. The prior plan had, had the common driveway coming off of Lot C's driveway rather than from the the, the way that serves the lots to the north of us, that's 90, 80, 90, and J K LLC's property. So we have redesigned the proposed common driveway, so it comes off of the frontage that exists in Lot 7, excuse me, on Lot F on that existing way, complying with that provision of the bylaw. The common drive then comes up matching into the existing easement that, that was created that leads ultimately to Cedar. And the, the three driveways for each of these three preexisting lots comes off of that proposed common driveway end. I think those really are the, are the key details that responded to, to Carolyn's issues. Stormwater's being managed. I don't know if that, that was an outstanding issue at all. But in our view, we have three preexisting single lot exemption lots. We have a lot that has frontage on, on a way. We, we believe that this is a way, as the planning board determined in its A and R approval for exactly this one, that created the new frontages for Lot 2 and Lot 1 as shown in this, that, that they were eligible for an A and R approval, which can only be granted if they have frontage on a way that provides actual and practicable access into the lots. And Black Horse Lane provides that access to them, and it therefore is creating frontage for Lot F as well. I'll note Lot F is not drawn so that the way is a separate lot. It is, the, the, the way is within an easement within Lot F. And under what's known as the derelict fee statute, that's not at all unusual that a way can be entirely within a, a single lot. There's a presumption that if the title to the way hasn't been conveyed, that if at the time it was created, the, the owner of it owned both sides of it, that the presumption would be that the, the lots on either side of it owned to the middle. That's my understanding, and at the time, then, when this was created, the deed was very specific that the, that the way remained part of what became Lot F. And so it's a way within Lot F, but a way that the, the lots to the north had frontage on. And Lot F therefore has frontage on the bound of the way, and we're taking advantage of that. If there's anything else that you'd like us to address, your questions, I'm glad to do it. We can have Carmen jump in to, to talk about the details if you'd like. I don't want to go over my time.
No, all right.
I just have a comment on the, the previous A and R that was done when I think I was the only one on the, on the planning board. If you, if everyone on the board notices that what's labeled on the left-hand side is Black Horse Lane, and then what's, what's labeled are, are private way, right of way, Black Horse Lane. There's no differentiation label of, of the public portion and the private portion that was a part of that A and R. So, you know, I, I would certainly in, in hindsight, I, I would say that the, that the engineer had a sleight of, of hand in misrepresenting what was, what was a private way and, and what was a public way portion of these lots. Certainly Attorney Watzke is correct. The planning board would endorse the A and R for lots, what's shown here is A2R and Lot 2 and, and 1. Typically, as having access and having frontage. And it only after the A and R endorsement and the, the 30-day appeal period had ended, was it clear that the left-hand portion that's labeled Black Horse Lane is a public way? While there were three lots on that parcel that make up A2R, 2, and 1, there were three lots that had been originally created. And the, I believe the applicant at the time was representing that the, the three, that they just were changing the boundaries of the three lots that had existed. I don't recall whether the, any of those lots had merged legally, but that's another matter. But I, but I will say again, that lots 1 and 2 took frontage off of a private way or another lot, Lot F. And that's my belief is that it was based on a misrepresentation. Again, it wasn't appealed, so that would stand.
All right, thank you, Clark. Well, you want to, you want to deal with that now, or let me get to Carolyn, because I'm sure we kind of went a little out of order there, but.
I, I, I can just respond very briefly that it, it's, it's not at all, it's not all unusual to have an A and R plan off of a private way. It doesn't have to be publicly owned. It just has to be a private way, open to the public passage, that, that creates frontage, and that's actually imprac, impracticably provides access. And so that's the determinations, my understanding, that the planning board would have made, is that it provided actual, practical access, and that because the point where they created their frontage was to the, I'm not sure where the North Arrow here is here, to the left of the, the boundary of Lot C, that that was a part that was open to some extent to the public, because it was, it was associated with all of those other preexisting lots. I'll note that, that what they could have done, they could have taken the position that they had a single lot exemptions for each of the preexisting lots, and just provided themselves with an, with an access easement. But they chose to redraw the lots, and the planning board gave them the A and R.
All right, Carolyn, you have the floor. You could summarize your position, essentially what is the town's position at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've had an opportunity to go through Attorney Watzke's response. And as, as you noted in your opening comments, we don't disagree that these lots were eligible for the single lot exemption. The only lot I had questioned was Lot C, which was subject to that 1961 A and R plan, and was changed, but it is also already improved for the house, so that's not really a lot issue. But the remaining lots, we agreed, were showed on a 1936 plan, and they are for eligible for the single lot exemption, but but I think what we have to back up and be clear about was what was I asked to opine about, you know, five, six months ago, and that was the interplay between the single lot exemption and a common driveway. And the single lot exemption under Cohasset's zoning bylaw would preserve these lots from having to merge by virtue of being held in common ownership. And not necessarily complying with zoning requirements. Because Cohasset has a much more generous provision than the zoning act allows under mass state law, these lots are allowed to continue to exist as independent lots. They survive merger, and as such, they are considered buildable. And the thing that becomes important here is to note that, you know, these lots can have less than the required lot area width and frontage. But the single lot exemption also contains a parenthetical in that definition that talks about the fact that, yes, you can have less than the required area width, depth, and/or frontage, provided that all of the other provisions of this bylaw are complied with. Now, as I understand Attorney Watzke's opinion, or his, his rebuttal response, he thinks the fact that we agree that these lots all qualify for the single lot exemption is sort of the end of the analysis, that even though these lots all have zero frontage, that, and we would say they're still buildable, that that somehow overrides. That and we would say they're still buildable, that that somehow overrides. The provision that you see on your common driveway bylaw found at seven point three D. The problem with that is that. The common driveway um bylaw makes it clear. That in order for lots to qualify for a common driveway, they have to have legal frontage. And the common driveway cannot serve as that frontage. So while we agree that these lots are buildable under the single lot exemption of your bylaw. We said, but they are not buildable by virtue of of also being accessed by a common driveway. Because of the provision of seven point three D. Now Attorney Watzke has given his opinion, I have given my opinion, we are certainly not judges. And who knows how a how a judge would ultimately decide and decipher. Uh we can argue about the rules of statutory construction or giving all of the provisions of. Uh a bylaw, it's due meeting and that no language is considered surplus. But um I'm not expect expecting members of the planning board to sit tonight in the place of of a judge and make that decision. But I think it is important to note that. Obviously, we have a difference of opinion where I would say you can't consider the common driveway application. Unless the lots also have legal frontage. Now, we've seen a revised plan here tonight and um. Maybe we could get a little more uh description about what that revised plan really purports to do. Uh because I think I heard Attorney Watzke now say that based on the revised plan. That it looks like lot F certainly has uh or or might be. Purporting to have frontage, so maybe there is um a a change here with respect to some of these lots. Um but there's also another alternative here and that is that. Where we have said that these lots are buildable under the single lot exemption, they could be built. Under subdivision plan by bringing in a road providing frontage. Now, I I know that Attorney Watzke previously filed a preliminary subdivision plan, I think that the um. The you know, what the purpose or the intent was behind that um might have been simply to attain a zoning freeze. Based on some anticipated zoning amendments that were being contemplated at the time, regardless, there's nothing that would stop. The property owner from submitting a subdivision plan to lay out a way that would provide a frontage for these lots. And I know I've heard in prior discussions with the planning board that um. Sometimes there is a preference for these private country ways. That somehow this is a something unique to the characteristics of Cohasset and that we don't necessarily like. Big wide subdivision roads, well, the planning board under the subdivision control law also has the ability. To waive any of its requirements under the subdivision control law. So nobody is saying that this twenty-foot wide right-of-way that then turns into a common driveway. And then, you know, uh is shown to end of Hammerhead, nobody is saying that this has to turn into a forty-foot wide. Uh throughway with sidewalks on both sides, it could still potentially um be something. Subject obviously to the planning board's approval, it could be something that closely resembles. This common driveway, but is actually a road providing frontage to all of these sites. Um and with with that, Mr. Chairman, that's um really all I have to say about this particular application.
Matt, just on the limited point about your new plan, how you think that changes anything here. And I mean, I understood too that your essential legal point is that the single lot exemption. Overrides our common driveway regs. That's the practical result, uh but if you want to briefly comment on whatever. The new plan does to change anybody's opinions here.
Carmen, if you could bring up the common driveway plan, please. Alright, so I I I think there's a little nuance here that that's being missed. As I understood Carolyn's uh opinion and as a read the bylaw. She's interpreting the bylaw to say that a common driveway has to come through your existing frontage. So we modified this common driveway plan and Carmen, if you could sort of zoom into it and then highlight where it's touching the existing right-of-way. So that that's the frontage that exists within lot F that the common driveway is coming on to. So we're seeking to comply with that interpretation of your common driveway bylaw to have the common drive. Come off of the frontage of this way. And then we do have a but a disagreement about the 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 effect of the other clause that Carolyn just referred to. That that each of the lots being served by the common driveway must have legal frontage. And my take is that if we agree that these are single lot exemption lots and they're buildable lots. And they don't have frontage and they're not required to have frontage, then they have effectively quote-unquote legal frontage, they have all the frontage that they legally. Need and the common driveway is coming off of frontage and it's providing access to those lots. So we're complying with one provision of your of the of the common driveway rule, we're having the driveway come off of legal frontage. And it's providing access to the existing lots that don't have frontage, but that legally aren't required to have it and therefore they have all they need. And the alternative, I agree with Carolyn, one alternative is a definitive subdivision plan. The other alternative is to do something that's not a common drive, a common drive is defined as a driveway that serves three lots. The alternative is to do effectively two driveways off of the 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 right-of-way. Uh one of them serving two lots and the the other serving one lot. And that's what we're doing with the applications to the building inspector, we figured frankly. Given the conversation we had with the board when we filed the preliminary subdivision plan. That the board would prefer that we do a common driveway as compared to a definitive subdivision plan. Because a definitive subdivision plan might change low outlines and create a lot more lots than than we have here. We would we would accept uh uh an approval of the common drive just for these three lots and that would be the end of it. Alternative is to do it the simple way, which is is through the building inspector, but we figured you'd want to have something that's that's designed. Uh with uh with more more detail that that you're reviewing.
Alright, so thank you. Let me let me start if I may, I'll take the liberty of starting with the planning board's questions and comments and observations. My my own, well, first of all, I'd like everybody to know, including the public, that we wouldn't be having this conversation. If it wasn't for Cohasset's unique and outlier single lot exemption provision. Uh we've come to learn, there's not much we might be able to do about it, it is under study, it's something the zoning bylaw count in council. So I mean by law committee and town council are looking at it, what we could do to reform, but if it wasn't for this, this has bitten the town in the bum. A few times where lots that otherwise wouldn't be developed under the state's single lot exemption get developed in Cohasset. Um my second observation is, you know, following up on what Carolyn said and I. I don't think we can stop development here because this the subdivision control law is the alternative. And with respect to the subdivision control law, there's a if there's a sentiment against it, it's because of the idea of thinking of traditional. Post-World War Two twentieth century subdivisions with big old cul-de-sacs and lots of pavement and everything, but. You know, by coincidence, two nights ago, the zoning bylaw committee held another one of its public forums. And we focused on environmental issues and looking forward to what environmental related changes we might make to the bylaw. And Clark made an excellent presentation about low-impact development and. Put some pictures up there of traditional cul-de-sacs with all their pavement and the the public enemy number one. There are alternatives to do that uh to how to develop a subdivision going into the twenty-first century and. You know, we the the bylaw committee has decided nothing, but the town may take a direction to going towards some of these more forward-looking. Environmentally sensitive rules. Uh the good thing is that um as Carolyn points out in the subdivision control law. And our um chapter three twenty-five of our bylaw, the town bylaws, we have a lot of flexibility. And can grant waivers to the rules and regulations that we have. And we can make this a showcase for more modern environmentally sensitive, low-impact development. Uh right now, but as far as the zoning bylaw goes and the common driveway application, I have to agree with our town council. That all these lots need frontage, they do not have it, I respectfully met very creative argument, but I can't believe that. A a uh single lot exemption lot can exist with no frontage, I can't believe that any court in the state would say that. You can have this lot and have no means of access to it. Um and under the bylaw, the zoning bylaw, we have no flexibility, we can't gra- grant waivers, we can't. Ignore what our common driveway bylaw says at the moment, I don't think we have any choice. So my my thinking, my own thinking here is that we have no choice but to deny the common driveway application and encourage you to go subdivision. But encourage you to think forward on some of the new changes and ideas. That are um being promoted with respect to subdivisions and going to have more environmentally sensitive development. Um you know, to the rest, again, to the rest of the board and to the public, we we can't stop development here, like it or not. Because of the single lot exemption, what Cohasset has done with that, but we can do it in a smarter way than a common driveway. Uh that, you know, and I and I don't think we can do it in a way that we're where we are in a position where we're completely ignoring. A section of the bylaw, I don't think we can, so those are just my thoughts, I'll I'll. Go around the board uh alphabetically, Amy, you have any thoughts or comments on this, questions?
The only comment I have is one that actually relates to the road that. Uh comes into the the road that we're talking about being a common driveway. So that road has the has the um scale of the entry road. Been changed, has it, is it larger now than twelve feet wide, is it going to?
Black Horse Lane, are you talking about?
Yes. Has that, has that changed?
My understanding, my understanding that under their common driveway application, no. My understanding is under the subdivision control law, we could suggest or. Condition improvements to that road, to the extent there is a capability to improve that road. That so now that that's a completely different engineering issue, but under the common driveway application, they don't have to touch the rest of Black Horse Lane. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I I don't think so.
It it may ask just for clarification through the chair, uh is Amy asking about the. The private section, Black Horse Lane or the public section? The private section?
This this the section that goes from blacktop to broken blacktop twelve feet wide. Um with a very limited um uh. Area on either side, it's not a um it's not a safe. With for the traffic that's what used by or the traffic that will be generated by this proposal.
Well, I I'll I'll, if I may, uh Tom, uh.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
With i- in a plan that we presented to the board earlier, we we showed improvements to that section of the of the driveway. Taking the position that the common driveway is only is only to the point where the red comes into it. But that we would we would propose and we we prepared, I think, believe, you know, stormwater management and and other details. For improvements to that that entrance section of the driveway.
And and what were the improvements to do?
Carmen, Carmen, why don't you describe them?
So this was the previous, the previous set of plans. Uh we were proposing to treat the entirety of this right-of-way. Uh and into the Hammerhead as a common driveway that would be serving. Number seventy, eighty, ninety, ninety-four and the thirty new lots, uh therefore we were proposing to make uh all of the. Uh the paved driveway be eighteen feet in width, um we were proposing a series of trenches as well. Uh to provide drainage uh infiltration. Um you know, so as as you can see, this areas, we were proposing to widen the existing driveway. And the proposed driveway was going to be eighteen feet, in this case, uh. The new, the revised plans um in order to commence the driveway. Illegal front- frontage, we are, I'm sorry, something happened to my plan, I don't know if you can see it, okay?
No, that there's part of it missing.
Yeah, um but uh.
Let's just switch plans again, there you go, I brought it back up.
Yeah, so in this case, uh this common driveway begins at this twenty-foot right-of-way. And it is only fifteen feet in width instead of eighteen, uh because it's only serving three lots. Um of course, if if the the board would. You know, uh consider this driveway as a common driveway, uh we could certainly. Uh widen this road to the eighteen feet, that is the. The required width for lots that serve more than five. You know, I'm sorry, for common driveways that serve more than five lots uh or even twenty feet, you know, um we certainly could accommodate any requests. But um as it stands, this this common driveway is only serving three lots and it's fifteen feet in width.
So do you have?
Yeah, it's serving three lots, but you just rattled off at least six and I that my my other concern is that this could. This could be trying to serve a lot more in the future, but anyway, Amy, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to 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 confirm, I I missed one of the meetings for this and are you saying that? The the green outlined area would be uh expanded, double its current width or or two-thirds of its width. And do you ha- do you have ownership to that property that that?
I I I'll I'll respond just to be clear, so in the plan that's presented right now, no, there's there's no. There's no change to that condition at all, in a plan that we presented previously. It was shown widened to eighteen feet with the stormwater management. And yes, uh ownership is is uh uh entirely by this applicant. Because all of that right-of-way is within lot F that that he owns. So if 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 the board, if the board were receptive to approving this project under the common drive. Uh but but it wanted the full length of that private section to be improved, we would provide you with that plan.
Well, it goes back to my point that I don't think we legally can do it, but we could do it on the subdivision as a subdivision. We don't, we don't have to approve a twenty-foot wide or forty-foot wide easement with curbs, you know, on either side.
But what if the applicant, if the applicant voluntarily um um with a super proposal?
We can't, we can't start waiving bylaw requirements because.
No, no, I'm 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 just saying if he voluntarily upgrades the um the private way portion of Black Horse Lane.
It doesn't matter if he doesn't have the frontage to do a common driveway, I we can't get in the position. Of looking the other way about the bylaw, we can't.
I'm not suggesting that time.
No, I I was, my my comment was really a point of information, I did not know that that had been. Uh discussed at the meeting that I wasn't there, the one thing I would say is it is really. Very sketchy to imagine it not being developed to the point where it functioned as a road. And not as a muddy path.
That's a sorry, thank you, Amy, let me go to uh uh who's next alphabetically, Kevin. Any co- questions, comments, thoughts?
No, I take a deep breath, Tom, before I uh even speak here.
Alright, we'll we'll come back to you. Oh, unless you're ready to speak now, go ahead.
Well, I you know, I just hear some things that are at opposite, it ends to each other. And you know, one is that. And, you know, one is that these are developable lots. And the other is that they don't have the frontage to be developed now. So I also hear that they could move forward under existing regulations. With a subdivision plan, and I heard from the applicant that that would entail or a suggestion that that. Could entail multiple driveways. And your discussion would circle back to what was made the other night, Monday night. With regard to environmental impacts. You know, at the end of the day, if these get developed and we know someone's got to get in and out of them. By ground because they're not going to be helicoptered in and out. There isn't. Water frontage, and I'm not trying to be flipping here, but we know there's gonna have, need to be road access in and out. How is that going to be done with the least amount of paved surface? Because that would mitigate environmental effects in this area. It would be minimize impacts to runoff. Things that the Conservation Commission will look at in their application of this. I guess I'm just gonna leave it at that and I'll, I'll let others comment.
And, and my answer again, I think that the risk of repetition is that. None of the, you know, a lot of this doesn't logically make sense because I think we all know what we, you know, we, we. We accept the inevitability of development of this piece of land. Um, and we'd like to see it done the, the least obtrusive way possible. And we have that option under the subdivision control law because this board has a great deal of flexibility. We do not have to make the road look like mine out here or any other. Long ago traditionally, traditionally built subdivision and cul-de-sac. We cannot do it in my legal opinion and our town council's legal opinion. Under the common driveway and as logical as it may seem to go that route, the, the. I'm concerned about the precedent of us just ignoring and waving something we cannot wave. You know, if it doesn't bite us here, it'll bite us in the future somewhere else on a different issue. So I, I'm trying to keep the legal integrity of this process. While acknowledging they have options and they have options, we're given our presentation the other night and given. A direction that the larger planning community is going in and probably we will, once we get to. We do, you know, adding something to the bylaw about it. We can do something that's environmentally far more sensitive than, than what's been done in the past. It, with respect to subdivision. So that we certainly have that flexibility to do that and I would encourage that. And it might be exactly what they're proposing. It's just under a different legal rubric than the common driveway application. That's. That part I don't think we can get around. So. You, you all set? I will go to.
Point well taken. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Deirdre.
Um, I am going to echo Tom's comments. I agree that we're stuck in a spot where there's the single lot exemption piece. I have no. Issue with that land. Obviously, there are lots there that are buildable. But we have no legal frontage. I am really held on that. I think that if you want to come back to us with a subdivision, we can talk about it. But, uh, that road is like a lot of other little ones in town. And if we start now, we are starting down the wrong road for many places within Cohasset. That's all I have to say, Tom.
All right. Thank you, Deirdre. Chris. Anything to add? Questions?
No, nothing that hasn't already been covered. Thank you, Tom.
All right. Clark, you've already said something. Do you, I'll give you one more shot.
Yeah, you know, I, I was just adding to a conversation that was in place, but no, I. I, I think council makes a good recommendation that, um. Uh, I, it. Ideally, we, we would get a subdivision. That, um, is configured in a way that's, that's similar to, um, what was put together. Uh, limits pavement. I mean, it, that, there's, there's four, four lots. One with a house on it or three new lots that have been created. Uh, as a part of this plan so that there would be, the hammerhead would, would serve. Three lots and then the existing curved driveway would serve that existing house lot. Am I right?
That's right.
And then, um, uh, seventy Black Horse Lane has its own driveway, uh, over to the north. Eighty and ninety, um, those are accessing the, 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 the ancient. Uh, what, or what was? The, 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 the common driveway that, that got created in two thousand seventeen or. Two thousand twenty or whenever. So, so this, as a common driveway would be serving. Eight, eighty Black Horse, ninety Black Horse, those new lots, one with a house on it already. Um, ninety-four, I think is mislabeled one ninety-four, but that's the existing house with the curved driveway in front of it. Or the, um. Whatever you want to call it. And then there's one, two, three lots to the west. So one, two, three, four, five, six lots would be using. The common driver, whether a subdivision is created or not, as a part of this proposal. And in fact. Um, from a geometrical perspective, I think that the, the revised hammerhead that comes off of lot F. It, it is a, not as preferable, um, a, uh. A geometry than the one that we just saw where, where the hammerhead comes off of the, I, I want to. I want to call it a cul-de-sac, but a cul-de-sac in front of that existing ninety-four Black Horse. Uh, lane, um, house. Now, I mean, in terms of the low-impact development thing that we looked at yesterday, if that, if that, um. A circular driveway. Um, is one way, it, it would actually really only be used by that, that existing house and. Um, from a geometrical perspective, that, that would give the fire department, uh, the, a location to turn around instead of a. A hammerhead. I, so I, I'm wondering if, if we do request that the subdivision route. Uh, take place and, and I think that maybe that's, that's okay, that there's a, there's a, an end up, there's gonna be. A hybrid sort of solution where, um. Where the main body of the private portion of Black Horse Lane gets widened to eighteen feet and that this. Circular driveway, uh, be, uh, used like a cul-de-sac for, um. Uh, access to the, to the other three lots to the west. But I, I think that might be, that might be a reasonable solution. I mean, the eighteen feet, that's serving. Six houses. I think that conforms to our, our six to nine. Uh, common driveway. I, I just hate to see. The end of Black Horse Lane. Uh, be turned into a, a sea of, of asphalt. While it might be advantageous from a, from an engineering perspective. Um, I think you have the geometry of turning around, um, almost all created. It's just that you got a. An existing asphalt driveway that served one house. For, for decades and recently now serves three and, and we're talking about adding three more potential houses. Uh, to that. I think that would definitely need to be upgraded as a part of the subdivision. Um, I don't know geometrically whether they can get the frontage that they need. Uh, from the existing circular driveway. For, of fifty feet, um, but. Certainly that would be their challenge. Man, I, I just don't, I personally don't like the geometry that we're looking at right now. It's a part of, um, the common driveway. I think that it could be improved. I think that what we saw before where the hammerhead comes off of the circular driveway is better. Um, so I mean, I think they, they have a lot of property i- i- in this location. They might even be able to squeak out another lot. Uh, out of the configuration if it's. It, you know, if they, if they do their. If, if everything works out, um.
Well, I think that's an argument. Another argument against a common driveway is that. There's the, we, we have six lots being served. Yes, in our bylaw. Again, here's another place where our bylaws. Are so outlier and bite us that we allow up to eight lots on a common driveway. And that's. Definitely in my view, an end around of the subdivision control law and it's ridiculous. We, we also under subdivision granted, we might get a lot of lots here. Because another problem, we have fifty-foot frontage in this town, unlike other suburban towns. We have a lot of things in the bylaw that. Are gonna come to bite us on this development.
I don't know about biting, but it just, the, the, if it is a subdivision, um, th- there are other properties, this thing labeled. Peter Stone looks like they could take frontage off of this lot. And increase, increase the lots served, um. So, but, but I think, you know, that's. When you do a subdivision, you're creating frontage and you're creating the potential for future lots. And.
And we no doubt will see them.
If we want to lock in that, that, that no more lots would be, uh, created and no new frontage would be created. With a common driveway that, um, has been upgraded and improved. That may actually be the compromise that, that makes sense here. I, but, um. What I see in, what I see, I, I just don't like the geometry. It seems like all the, all the areas are available for. Reasonable access and a two-way driveway, common driveway. Um, it, it's just, I don't, I don't see it here, um. Uh, so I suppose the thing to do would be to have the, uh, you know. I mean, I, I would vote against this particular common driveway. But be open to. A subdivision application or another common driveway application. I, I will say for. For, um, Conahasset. Uh, way, which is over by the ball fields on North Main Street. That, um, is I think a four or five-house subdivision. And the planning board did, um, allow, um, I think it was eighteen feet of pavement. With because it was so wide open and, um. As opposed to twenty-four-foot, um, uh, pavement. I believe there was also some width relief. Um, at, um, the Cook Estate project of seventeen units. So that's not. I mean, that's, that was done under subdivision control laws, but yet it's the same width as what was proposed for. A common driveway and.
Because it's, because it's the legally appropriate way to do it.
All right. I think I've, I've talked around this enough. Uh, I'm gonna leave my comments there.
Yeah, all right. Um, Matt, I just have one question before I go to Amy. I see your hand up, Amy. Oh, I thought I. No, oh, that's sorry. That's just my cursor. Sorry. Um, Matt, is there any plan to open up access to Cedar Lane?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time.
Let, 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 let me, I, I, I don't want you feeling that there's something, you know, funky going on here. We, we would, we would happily, if, if the common driveway permit were, were granted. We would happily agree to a condition to have the access to Cedar Lane abandoned.
That's half of what I wanted to hear.
What, what's the other half?
The other half is not the common driveway because I, again, I, I'm pretty adamant that I don't think we have the legal choice to go that route. Um, but Clark has pointed out in his discussion, you know, just how much flexibility we have the other way around. So. All right, uh, before I go to the public, uh, Lauren or Carolyn, anything you'd like to add or question here before I go to the public?
I don't have any additional points to add to the discussion. Thank you.
Nothing you've heard changes in your positions, opinions, Carol? No? All right, amongst the public, do we have anybody that wishes to be heard here? Do we have anything in Q and A?
We have nothing in Q and A. There's some, um, members of the audience here. So I'd just say again, if you wish to address the board. You could just insert your name and address or you can raise your hand and we'll take you in the order that it's seen.
There was one that just popped up.
Um, you also have a Sherri, so I don't know who came first, but.
All right, well, let's, uh, ladies first. We'll deal with Sherri and then George McGoldrick. If you want to. Promote them if you'd like to come online so everybody can see you. That would be great. Okay, Sherri, you have the floor. Name and address, please.
Yeah, this is actually Ken Ganey, uh, with Sherri at forty-three Black Horse Lane.
Sneaking into the ladies' first rule. Okay, that's.
So, so my question is, what does this imply for the rest of the public way of Black Horse Lane? You know, the road is about eleven feet wide. You know, where at forty-three Black Horse Lane, we have two lots. One on the riverside and the one where a house is. Uh, our property is constantly being damaged because people cannot get down the street. Construction is constantly. Damaging our property, pulling over into the side of the road. And this is with only, you know, there was four houses and now you're talking about potentially nine houses being served by. This, this narrow lane and you can talk about your new common driveway subdivision being eighteen feet wide, but. That, that is past all the current residents of Black Horse Lane, so that's not gonna help us. And widening a road that is within the wetlands does not seem a very conservation-friendly way for development.
All right, well, uh, Carolyn, you correct me if I'm wrong, but. Um, under the common driveway application, things would stay the way they are. Under subdivision control. The board would have the option of ordering improvements to the entirety of Black Horse Lane. But then we come into the practical issue of where could we make those improvements? And the residents would have to understand that if the pavement lies within the. Wherever the right-of-way lies, you know, little pieces of green up next to the pavement that you think is part of your front lawn aren't going to be. Part of your front lawn anymore. So we, there, there's trade-offs of the residents there, you know. If we do improvements, but again, we, the board has more flexibility under the subdivision control law than. Directly. So is, is that correct, Carolyn? Correct a quick summary of it? Hello? There you go. Oh, now you're muted again. You're muted again, Carol. Carol. You're muted again.
She's still muted. There you are. You're fine.
You're fine. Hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I had nothing to add to that summary, Mr. Chairman.
When it comes to the rest of Black Horse Lane, it's going to be a practical problem of how it gets improved because of its narrow. Dimensions that have existed forever, but, you know, we, we still cannot do anything, uh, in my view, that. Legally to stop development of this other property. And just because it hasn't been developed for all these decades to the extent being discussed, doesn't mean it can't happen. So. We want to try to make it the best for everybody, but, uh. Everybody has rights to develop the property here. Um, okay, next, um, George McGoldrick.
Uh, George McGoldrick, one oh seven border street Cohasset, um, representing the Gulf Association. And Gulf Association's been around for over fifty years and the mission is to try to maintain the health of the river, which has been. A dire, uh, predicament the last twenty years where the, we've lost a lot of the wildlife, a lot of the fish, a lot of the, the, uh. Clammy and such, so. The Gulf Association is not opposed to development. We are, we like responsible development. Uh, if you remember when eighty and ninety, uh, Black Horse Lane were approved. We, uh, opposed it because of the fact they didn't have frontage. We actually hired a lawyer, um. Uh, who's actually Mr. Watzke was our lawyer at the time, I believe. Um, and, uh, we were unsuccessful in convincing the planning board at the time that they didn't have frontage. So we're glad to hear the planning board tonight. Admit that that wasn't. So we're glad to hear the planning board tonight admit that that was a mistake, um, eighty and ninety. Regardless, those houses are built, uh, I think one of the families has already moved in. And I'm sure there'll be great neighbors and I'm sure they will be using pesticides and fertilizers on their lawn now, uh, that will harm the Gulf River. So the Gulf Association will just be monitoring what's happening to ensure that whatever happens is beneficial to the environment. Um, we do, though, agree with the, what sounds like the board's position is that a common driveway is not the right way to go. Um, and, uh, we agree that, uh, we would suggest that they move forward and not allowing the common driveway application. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Sean.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, I.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me just, yeah, I will give you that opportunity.
Just, just with regard to the Gulf Association.
Yeah.
I, I, I did not represent the Gulf Association with regard to the lots on Black Horse Lane. I represented the Gulf Association with regard to Dead, to Dedeski on Border Street.
Okay, all right. Understood, uh, Ms. Heffernan, I saw you pop up on the screen for a minute. Do you want to be heard on this in any respect?
I think that was a missed click on my part, actually.
Well, okay.
Unless you would like to.
Yeah, unless you want to, um, Debbie Shad has a question. Debbie, do you wanna come on, on the screen, or should we just read it? Just raise your hand if you wanna come on the screen. Okay, if you could promote Debbie, please.
Turning us now.
Debbie, the floor is yours, name and address, please. And you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Debbie Shad, thirty-one Summer Street. I live at the corner of Summer Street and Black Horse Lane. Um, I walk down Black Horse Lane all the time and have since nineteen eighty-one. It, you know, as, as many people have pointed out, it's a very narrow road. In most places, two cars can't really pass each other at the same time. Sometimes, as a pedestrian, I have to get off the road to, to enable one larger vehicle to get safely by. Um, I think there's some serious safety concerns on the part of Black Horse Lane that goes from Summer Street to the end right now. Um, that I'd like, you know, it'd be useful to know to what extent those could be addressed. So my question is really, is there any survey available of Black Horse Lane? So that we know, so, and all the boards know whether the lane is just the current paved portion or whether that, I assume the town owns Black Horse Lane, but I could be wrong. And if they do own Black Horse Lane, is it actually wider than the existing paved portion? Which could give the boards some flexibility in requesting improvements, at least in certain places. There's some places where it's a total bottleneck and it's gonna be very hard to, um, especially where two driveways go off, uh, right before you hit the river. Uh, it's very narrow there and there's a utility pole on, uh, both sides, I think. Um, so I guess that's my question, is it, is, is there any available survey of Black Horse Lane?
Um, I'll, I'll answer that again, it's the subdivision control law that's the only means by which the board would have any control over the entirety of Black Horse Lane. I am sure that a plan exists of Black Horse Lane, probably buried in the basement of the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds and the Engineering Department. Um, it's very possible that the right-of-way for the lane is wider than the pavement. It's not necessarily the case that the pavement goes right down the middle of the right-of-ways. Some, some roads you come to, there's a lot of land on one side and then the right-of-way ends at the pavement on the others. So I, I'm sure that could all be discovered. It's existed for a long enough time that I'm sure there's plan of it somewhere. Um, and that's gonna be important for us to know if we did order improvements, because we'd have to know what we can do within the right-of-way, otherwise you're getting into taking a private property to make improvements and that would be an ex- very expensive proposition that we'd wanna avoid.
On the engineer's, uh, plan, does show a twenty-foot wide public way. Uh, for that.
I don't, I don't, public, private, uh, Cohasset has actually very few public ways that the town is.
Public, it's, it's labeled public and, and my deed research, uh, done over the last few years, uh, confirms that it's a public way.
Okay, good, that's one of the rare.
End of, of, what, of seventy, um, Black Horse Lane.
Yeah. Okay, so I hope, I hope that answers everybody's questions about Black Horse. I mean, there's only one mechanism by which we could, we as a planning board could do anything about the rest of Black Horse here. All right, um. Anybody else on the board have any comments, questions? Uh, Carolyn or Matt, if you wanna have a last word, feel free. All right, but I wanna bring this to a vote about whether we're gonna proceed with this application or not, that's what I mean by last word, so.
Uh, no, I, I, I've, I've heard the, the board members, um, just you'll, you'll, you'll take, you'll take whatever vote you feel is best. I, I think you're making a mistake. And there are gonna be unintended consequences of pushing us to a, to a subdivision, but you, you go ahead and take your vote.
That may be, Matt, but I don't think we have the choice, that's the problem. And a lot, a lot of things about our bylaws have boxed this into, a lot of things about our bylaws have boxed this into this corner.
Well, I, as I, as I've expressed, I think that, that, um, you do, you do have the authority to grant the approval that we're asking for. We've provided you with a, with a, um, a common driveway that, that addresses Carolyn's issue of, of it, that it has to come off of existing frontage. And you have, uh, all acknowledged that there, that these are, uh, pre-existing single lot exemption lots that are buildable, well, in order to build on, on any single lot exemption lot, you need to have at least an easement to get to the lots. And we're, we're providing the access. So, um, I think that you, you certainly have the authority to grant this. And, um, and, uh, have just the three additional lots, uh, developed. And if we're pushed to, to a full preliminary subdivision and definitive subdivision, you know, you're creating frontage, a whole lot of frontage, legal frontage.
I perfectly understand that. Carolyn, does anything in your opinion change by their new plan?
No, it does not.
Yeah, I, I, I have to agree that there's no frontage for these lots, so. It's just, so I, I was stuck in that quandary and I, I know with our, you know, fifty-foot frontage, that we create a risk of a lot more development. Uh, and then, you know, you can't say it's just these three lots. Seventy is big enough to be subdivided again, ninety, eighty, ninety could be divided again. I get it, I get it, but, you know, we can't, you know, Clark had, somebody had suggested, I think it was Clark, you know, just restricting it to these three, six lots, no, we can't do that. We can't bind the owners of seventy, eighty and ninety to this decision. So, you know, we, I, you know, admittedly, we're between a rock and a hard place, but I think you have the opportunity to come very close to doing what you propose, just, a- again, under the rubric of subdivision control. We have that flexibility and I, you know, we are going in the low-impact, environmentally sensitive direction, so. Um, and Clark gave a few examples where we've done it before with less, less than twenty feet pavement, so. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion, um, and I'll make the motion, uh, tonight is, I make a motion that, uh, on the finding that these lots do not have frontage and based on opinion of our council that we deny the common driveway application. Anybody wanna second that?
So moved.
He, he made the motion, you just have.
I made the motion, I made the motion, you're seconding it, Deirdre.
Seconding it.
Thank you, all right, any further discussion from the board? All right, I'll take a alphabetical roll call.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Klein, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Miss Plex, I.
I don't know who I heard in the background. And, uh, all right, so the, the, the application is denied and, you know, again, to, to the public and to Attorney Watzke's point, a, a lot of combination of old Cohasset bylaws that sometime lay dormant and don't happen are gonna come back with us and maybe make more development on this spot than we ever would have wanted. But the, tho- those are the rules that we are dealing with and we have to deal with them regardless of the consequences and, you know, the bylaw committee's looking at them, but we have to hear from the public too about whether this is acceptable or not. We can't just do things unilaterally, so. Um, I thank everyone for their time and, um, what is the status, what is the status, Carolyn, of the preliminary subdivision that was filed before?
No.
Well, I know, I know, well, I know, Matt, you, it was filed under the prior owner and I think you came to try to amend it with the new owner and I think we said, no, you can't do that, so.
No. Well, so I, I, I can address that and I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
So, uh, we were coming up on the, uh, the, the seventy-day time period within which one is, uh, required if you're gonna have the advantage of the zoning freeze to file the definitive subdivision plan after having filed the preliminary. And you recall, I, I informed the planning board that because there were no pending, um, uh, rule changes, because the planning board voted not to proceed with the common drive rule amendments and because there was no pending zoning amendments that we with, we, we were withdrawing, uh, that application. We're, we're not going to proceed with the filing of a definitive subdivision. Um, that does not foreclose us from filing another preliminary subdivision and.
Yeah, okay, so we're basically, yeah.
So there's nothing, there's nothing pending, there's nothing.
So we're on the same page that if you go to subdivision, we have to start from scratch.
Yes, we would, we would, and so I did have one quick question, and that's, will the board be issuing a written decision, uh, memorializing tonight's vote, or do we just go with tonight's vote?
Uh, we can do that if you'd like.
And just whatever your procedure is, I don't know.
Yeah, I think perhaps there's something of this nature, um, we probably should do that, so. Um, Carolyn and I can come up with something in the next, you know, fit it into our otherwise lackadaisical schedules that we both have, so.
Um, I'd like to say that, given the length of the discussion and given the fact that this is being taped, I would ask the tape be, be retained. Uh, the notes that we get are clear, but they're very, very short and they could not be used for any type of informative, uh, discussion of a legal nature or even of a planning nature. So all of the materials should be saved.
Okay. Probably a good idea. I, I, you know, I sincerely hope you don't go that route, Matt, where we need to preserve records, things of that nature, that we'll just go into the working cooperatively on a subdivision point. All right, uh, well, we'll get.
I think Deird- I think Deirdre's point actually is, is well-taken, that there's a lot of substance of what was discussed tonight and would be helpful to have notes on it or transcript of it for us to be able to make reference back to.
All right, that's fine.
The Zoom meetings are available on the, on the, uh, town of Cohasset YouTube, uh, portal.
Yeah, but there's, what Amy is suggesting is that we make sure it's preserved and not, I don't know if those things get deleted after a period of time, I, I, I.
It can be converted, it can be converted into a text.
Yeah, we can do that. We, we.
For, for what it's worth, my, my office, we have the technology to be able to convert directly from the audio to a text. So if Lauren can send me the, a link to it, um, we'll see how effective that software is.
And for that.
Yeah, yeah, there wasn't an old show that said, we have the technology enough. Beyond, beyond my capabilities, but I'll try to put together a quick decision because it was fairly short motion with fairly short conditions, so. Get that circulated.
Um, and just for the record, um, Clark already mentioned that our videos are on the YouTube channel, but ever since we started recording, having virtual meetings at all, everything is automatically recorded and we save it not only in our IT cloud, also there on the YouTube channel, so they sort of just live there. They haven't been getting deleted since we started doing this in twenty twenty.
Okay.
All right.
Good, we can all see how we've aged over the last two years. All right, thank you all, uh, for being here tonight and, um, I'm sure we'll see you shortly. Have a happy.
Thank, thank you, folks, have a good evening and happy holidays.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. That was very complicated, I appreciate all the board's work on that one. Uh, next, uh, we are going to, uh, go back to some internal business that we were gonna discuss at our last meeting. Um, but first, I, I see we have a vote on our next meeting schedule and.
Lauren, Lauren has her hand up, Tom.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to just ask the question to Tom, did you want Carolyn to stay for this? Or did you wanna let her enjoy the rest of her evening? Not on the white sheet reading.
Yeah, would you say you've been doing classes for five days here, you, you get a break tonight, so.
Something like that, yes.
I think we can deal with, the, the only, the only question, let me ask you this about something that's on our agenda. The, the planning board statutorily is in charge of the master plan, correct?
Yes.
And would we, on our own, be able to revive the implementation committee? The master plan implementation, that's the only legal question or political question, I suppose.
Our current, I'm sorry to jump in, I know this for Carolyn, but our current master plan implementation committee, the way it's charged is through the select board, so. Uh, the current framework would have to change, but I, I think simply, simplest way to do it politically would just be to let the select board know that you want to reinvigorate the committee.
Yeah, all right, but I, I just, I, I don't, I'm not anticipating problems, but if push came to shove, given our statutory authority over the master plan, what can we do about implementing the master plan?
What, what was the expiration date of the implementation committee?
I don't know that it had one, did it?
Uh, it doesn't have an expiration date, the appointment terms. Last, there are several reappointed, um, but they just haven't been meeting regularly, so.
Um, you don't have to answer that tonight if you don't have it o- off the top of your head, Carolyn, but, you know, we're, that, that is a topic we're gonna discuss tonight about wh- whether the master plan implementation committee's. Anyway, uh, unless you wanna stick around, you're free, free to go and thank you for your help.
Uh, no offense, I love spending time with you, but, um, it's been three straight nights this week.
Yeah, no. I'll distribute a copy of the decision that I wrote for, that we just did, so.
Okay, sounds good. Good night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Night, thank you.
All right, so, um, Lauren, uh, if you could just, yeah, our next meeting is December fourteenth, which is next week, January fourth and fifth. I know we don't have a lot on the agenda because applications seem to have dropped off a cliff. Um, and then you wanna set the, uh, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three, so if you wanna take the floor and discuss all that.
Absolutely.
Yes, sorry.
And, and I'm sorry, I will not be here next week, I have, uh, my work. Just let you know, I have my, my, uh, holiday activity I, for school I have to be at, so, sorry.
Guess we're not invited.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you know. Trust me, Tom, you don't wanna be there.
Okay, all right, so what, what's on tap for the fourteenth, fourth and twenty-fifth? And then what do you wanna do about the rest of the schedule?
So, um, we have nothing in the queue for the fourteenth, that's why on our agenda, there's a little star that says TBD because I wanted to check with you all if you wanted to convene next week. We don't have anything that will be continued. Uh, the twenty, I'm sorry, January fourth, uh, we are queuing up to re-advertise the public hearing for fifty-five South Main Street. A caveat there that we have not yet received the payment needed to complete the peer review process, which we had discussed with them as needing to proceed with that date. So by the end of this week, I'm hoping to get a consensus on whether that's moving ahead on January fourth or if that's then gonna go to our second January meeting. Um, with that, so that brings us, that's the only thing we have queued up for the fourth. And then January twenty-fifth, we had just targeted that date and confirmed Carolyn's availability to do planning board training. And the topic that we had last agreed upon to do as our next session was going to be, um, zoning by law amendment, adoption and procedures and all the sort of ins and outs, what the planning board statutory authority is there. Um, we thought that would be fitting timing to do in the beginning of the new year as then quickly we're gonna be going to town meeting cycle and we're planning to have, uh, any zoning article hearings in March for the planning board.
Okay.
And then just in terms of the twenty twenty. And then just in terms of the twenty twenty-three schedule, we typically meet twice a month, um. I took a look, I just sort of looked into our, I had into our schedule. This year, the month of February falls oddly with holidays and the way that our January schedule falls, so I only put one in February. And then I always put one in August because people tend to like to have a little bit of a lighter August. Um, this is always just, of course, as you know, subjects change, sometimes we need to add meetings. Sometimes we, you know, eliminate meetings, having a lighter load, but this, we try to get. A look ahead in advance, that way we can let applicants know sort of what they're looking at ahead of submittal deadlines because. For new submittals other than uh, uh, ANRs, because they have a a caveat on timeline. All of our other new submittals, we require five weeks in advance of a hearing date because they require public hearing notice and all these sorts of. Steps and processes um, that take some time to to get ready.
Okay, good.
So when I took a look at that schedule further out, um. And you're, I think it was a general two-week placement, I saw that that schedule for the first week in. April coincided with Passover. And I would think that that would not be an appropriate um, date.
Okay, well, thank you for flying that. I typically, I do try my best to avoid holiday weeks and school break schedules, but every now and then they fall through the cracks, so that's why we do this.
And for for the March, for the. You know, I'll give you the update in the zoning by law committee a little bit, but in March, we should anticipate that two of our meetings. Uh, you know, especially if we have applications to also deal with. We will probably have to put the review of the zoning bylaws proposed for the Springtown meeting into two meetings, so. You anticipate that, um. You know, if if we still have gaps where there's nothing in the meeting at all, with regard to applications, maybe we could knock them all off in one night, but. Uh, plan plan for that in March, for sure. All right, so you need, you don't need a vote from us or anything, I I guess so for the fourteenth for next week, um. You know, we're going to discuss some other things right now that we can knock off, unless there's any general. Or business that we need to discuss, I think we can go ahead with not having a meeting next week and.
Right.
Enjoy the holiday, the the bylaw committee is is going to meet one more time in December on the nineteenth, the following Monday. But um, you know, if everybody's okay with not going on the fourteenth, we won't do it.
Okay with that.
Unless somebody wants the third Christmas party, of course. We have to have the party out of town, by the way, can't 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 meet as a quorum in town, so um. All right, so good, Lauren, go with the schedule, make the adjustments for holidays, double check for holidays, April, February vacation week, et cetera, et cetera. And um, I'd like everybody, the the meeting on the twenty-fifth, January twenty-fifth, where we have Carolyn. Talk to us about the bylaw review process, which is one of our formal statutory duties, I'd like. Everybody to make the effort to be to that one. Um, especially if you've never been through, so. Okay, so with that, um, anything, Lauren, planning director updates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were gonna talk about. Um, let's, let's think, the Affordable Housing Trust and Steering Committee, oh, and that's by Cat Milo, sorry. Um, the Affordable Housing Trust and Steering Committee are meeting again next week, actually, we have um. The Affordable Housing Steering Committee primarily will be meeting with Habitat for Humanity's new development director, she, they had been waiting for some time to fill that position. And I met with her earlier this month, um, they're really. Getting ready to go guns blazing sort of on the fundraising efforts for eight oh eight Jerusalem Road, which is exciting because we'll start to see. Things actually happening there and ultimately start to have some like, you know, when they really get to building, build volunteer opportunities. Um, so that'll be exciting to learn about, the trust has been um, you know, sort of working on their communications planning and. You know, we, I've been doing a lot of work with the select board and sort of preparing for the MBTA um. Zoning, multifamily zoning, which I'll distribute some information for you and maybe one of our upcoming meetings, um. I could carve out a little bit more time to sort of run through the PowerPoint there, but I've gotten new information about what the MBTA. Multifamily um, zoning implications mean for us, what some potential thoughts are that we, if we wanted to come into compliance, what we, what we could potentially do. And then in addition, um, we have, we're still waiting for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty census figures to be finalized. Update the subsidized housing inventory because there's a particular figure. Um, in a data set that has not been finalized in its final form. But the MBTA is currently using a twenty twenty census figure for your own housing hap- housing count, so I'm like, if they can use it. It's good enough for me to at least project what the final census figure will be, so. Um, we also have a clearer picture about what our S H I projection will be, um, so. Sort of been doing a lot of digging about our affordability uh, criteria in town. And then in addition, I won't steal too much thunder, zoning bylaw committee's been meeting, we had um, three public forums. Fairly well attended all throughout different varying, um, you know, groups and and hybrid model. And we also, and then hybrid model, I'll now pivot to, I've been working, uh, looking to do some hybrid options for us. Looking to get back in the spring, um, there's just a lot of logistics that go into. Uh, hybrid planning and even like when you think about the forum. It's a lot of staff that go into, a lot of staff planning, backend time logistics, day of and presence, which. We're not going to have multiple staff, but we're not going to be adding staff capacity to to have additional staffers do these things, so that's the difference and. You know, you see it done in the forum, it's like, oh, it seems so simple, it's not as simple to do it for all of our boards and committees that we have a lot of. We have about like, you know, twenty some odd boards and committees that are really only staffed by like. Five to seven uh, full-time staff members, so. Um, so, but we're working on logistics and we hope by like, maybe March to roll out some hybrid meetings, so more to come on that. And I think in a nutshell, that pretty much covers um, my snippet for now.
Yeah, and and on the housing, if anybody hadn't heard, I I guess the selectmen decided not to go forward with. That developer for five oh two North Main on a friendly forty B. Um. We've also had some inquiries about some development in the village, that's pretty much the only action going on, we're not getting any other applications coming in. Uh, one, one of the ones in the village you'd be familiar with is the James Lane project that has the old JJ's ice cream. And I think the developer is ready to go with the commercial component of that. And uh, we we met with him and got an opinion on council about whether it had to be a whole new application or just a modification of the. Old application, since it's all one big piece of condo property, so. That'll probably be coming at us fairly soon, but that's, that's pretty much, I guess, there's not much on the horizon for us, permit wise. Um, all right, with respect to, yeah.
Just so it's on your radar, I'm across the street from the former JJ's on Pleasant Street, so if it comes to that, you might need to talk about whether or not I need to reduce myself.
Probably out of caution, but.
Just give it, give it some thought, so I don't surprise you with it later.
No, and then the.
If you're on the butters list.
Yeah.
Within three hundred feet, something like that.
Yeah, it's just good practice to.
I could throw a cat and hit it from here, sorry, Lauren.
Yeah, 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 um, so um. All right, with respect to the zoning bylaw committee, um, we had a very productive, so we did have our third seminar the other night, Clark presented. Uh, Amy's husband, Tom Bell, presented, we also had somebody from NA PC. Um, the good thing about the environmental issues and climate change, there's a lot of material and toolkits and model bylaws. To to do, they'd have to be co-acidized, but it also is a lot of review work and a lot of work to be done. Um. I've been. Pretty strong in my opinion about keeping the zoning bylaw process to two town meetings through fall of twenty-three. But you know, the environmental stuff, which would be all new initiatives, it's really complicated stuff that. You know, that's what jumped out at me the other night and that we may have to do that. Particular piece into twenty-four, depending on how we as a town decide to go forward with the zoning bylaw. And and with respect to the game plan for that, you know, we had some different recommendations from uh, town council from Judge Cutler. And um. She and I had a long discussion, we have full understanding of what she's proposing and why. Um, so there's a slight change in the game plan, but except in the, in the spring, we are going to go through. Um, some procedural and housekeeping stuff, we are going to propose changes within our current. Organizational format. Uh, I personally have been an advocate for a different organizational format, but that decision will be made at the end, after all the changes are made, so. We're going to make changes within the existing format. And right now, the the game plan for the spring and what we would be facing as a board in March. Is Article One and Article Twelve, which are administrative articles, twelve. Is where we deal with the various permits that we do, special permit variance, site plan review. It also deals with the enforcement section. Uh, Article Thirteen that exists today is another administrative thing that has two provisions in it, that's going to be sort of deleted, merged into Article One. Article Two is definitions, we will probably do some definitions, but not all, not a complete overhaul of the definitions because. That ties into the table of uses, so we first have to get. Our changes to the table of uses in in line. To match up with definitions and terms that we use, but. Some of the changes that we immediately need to address, such as height that this board has dealt with. Will probably be addressed in the spring, and if there's anybody that has a suggestion for a definition that needs to be changed. Or added, that we don't have now, now would be the time to speak up about it. Um. Town council has given us the changes to Article Ones and Twelve, we voted on those at our meeting on the thirtieth. So she's just going to finalize those up into the Lauren article. At our meeting on the nineteenth, we're supposed to entertain. Uh, the changes to Article, the definitions that we will make. The changes to Article Three, which is the districts, which right now is just language differences, whether we. Consolidate and rename districts may wait till the fall, may come forward and. Maybe some of it will come forward in the spring, but again, changes to the names of the districts. Requires changes into the tables of uses and the tables of dimensions, and so that may all come as a package into the fall. Uh, we will probably deal with uh, the sign bylaw. Which does not have a lot of controversial changes. We will probably deal with the solar and wind bylaws, which are proposed for some changes and. The Alternative Energy Committee is looking at those and looking at town council's diagnostic comments. And then Article Eight, the non-conforming section of the bylaw. Non-conforming uses and structures. Town council has recommended a number of language changes and we will probably deal with the simple language changes. But the single lot exemption part of it. Is going to be in the fall, the single lot exemption. There's four options on the table, town council is trying to come up with a fifth option of what we can do with it. And that will require uh, what we learned in this. Bylaw working group when we first floated the idea of changing the single lot exemption. Uh, that's the one that generates public interest and there'll need to be some public education and forums on that subject. Um, there, we are looking at possibly in the spring, any other kind of low-hanging, non-controversial fruit. Um, and then in the fall. We would be dealing with the major changes of. Table of uses, table of dimensional regulations. Parking only in the sense that we are doing a study, we we're going to commission a small study on parking to make sure that our. Current requirements of how many spaces you need per use and the size, the dimensions of a space are up to snuff and up to the state of the art. Um, single lot exemption. And any of the other things related to uses and dimensions that we want to address, and then new initiatives. Like environmentally related initiatives would be part of that more substantive change in the future. Um, we will continue to do forums on these individual topics, we may do updates of the ones we already did, once we have some. Concrete changes proposed. Um, the likelihood is that we have to have the spring warrant articles done by February. So we are tentatively planning for a public forum in the end of February to roll out the articles. Even though town meeting is tentatively May one, we want to roll it out to the community. In a non-town meeting setting of, you know, here's a fate accompany, yes or no vote, want to get feedback. At a time, you know, before the planning board's hearings and 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 uh, you know, so that if we want to make any changes, we'll have the time. To make any changes based on feedback we get. Uh, the planning board process will be another public process, members of the public can come. This board will make recommendations, yea or nay, it'll be. Uh. That'll be done before the thing goes to print, so again. We would have the opportunity to make any changes that that process brings up. Um, so for, in terms of our meeting schedule in the bylaw committee, we're meeting the nineteenth. And probably will have two meetings in January. And, you know, by February should have these, what are looking like at the moment, nine or ten. Warrant articles for the spring, um, ready to go by then. As far as the forums go, again, we had good presentations the other night, uh, learned a lot, I think, you know, there's, these are directions we probably want to go into. But they do require some study. Um, you know, the attendance, Kevin was there, you know, I wish it had been greater, but you know, it's, it's been fairly consistent, the number of people and who's. Who's participating in all of these that we're getting. Um, so, you know, it's being publicized to death, so, you know. We've talked about this once before, I'm not sure, so much sure what we can do, but um. Lauren and I have discussed perhaps babysitting, I, I think, you know, the. The forum where we roll out the articles for their first reveal would might be a Saturday, it's going to be a February Saturday, there's probably not a lot of. Kid events going on, you know. Perhaps at the high school, if it has the hybrid capability and the high school, you know, has. Places there, you can do babysitting like for town meeting is done, so, you know, anything we can do, because there is a. The generation of people with small children are not attending these forums and we're missing them. Um, you know, I I I'm hoping they're paying attention to everything that's coming up and we don't get. Surprised at town meeting and blindsided with. Questions and concerns, but, you know, we do have to try to, you know, whatever we can do to improve the outreach to that demographic. Uh, you know, o- open to suggestions and ideas, but.
You know, the rec center, um, the the um, the open house for the rec department.
Yep.
February, March, for summer programs and stuff. Um, we should try and set up and grab a table for for the.
Yeah.
Zoning, because that's the demographic that's.
Yeah, you're right, it's an absolutely.
Demographic, not that we'd be the most exciting uh, table to. To come to, but maybe we could jazz things up and get at least.
Well.
Be available to answer questions and.
Yeah, Lauren Lauren and Cassandra have done some things like they did at the farmer's market and they're far more presentable. Yeah, they're far more presentable than I am, and so. Get ready, girls, you guys are going to that, but Lauren, that's a great idea, so see if we can set that up to get to participate in that, and again, that gets around scheduling. We want, we don't want to conflict a forum with that, but uh. You know, so um, we're gonna, we're gonna, Lauren had sent me a draft schedule, you know, again. As she said, she and Cassandra are spread thin. Supervising a number of other committees other than this one. And, you know, we're either meeting on Monday or Wednesday nights with the bylaw committee twice a week to not conflict with this board, so. We're probably going to keep to that schedule for the foreseeable future, at least through next fall, so.
Have we ever thought about uh, doing a television? Show with with uh, the. School to have a statement about what's going on. And ha- have it available to people and then send people a card that says, no, you can't make it to the meetings, but here's what's going on.
Well, um. Uh, Justin. Well, we're, these, these forums have been on TV. And and the, they've been on TV and Zoom and Live. I don't know, I haven't seen on my own TV how much it's being repeated, if it, I don't know, people watching it, I haven't looked. Justin's been doing quickie interviews of me that he's putting up on the website and YouTube, I don't know where he's putting it. You know, which isn't exactly going to draw people in, listening to me drawing on, but um.
There's still two thousand seventeen master plan stuff uh, uh, on the uh. The, the, the town's cable, one four three TV.
Yeah, yeah, so um, I mean, any and all ideas, um. As far as materials, we, I guess we've been allowed in the budget before all these forms that postcards have gone out.
Um, the cards only went out once.
Okay, well, you know. I think, I think, you know, it again, it it's a budgetary issue, but. But if, you know, if we do a pre-town meeting, public forum that's rolling out the articles, I would. Strongly recommend that the articles be printed and distributed widely so that people, we generate interest of people coming. Because the, the point of doing it early is to get combat at, at a time when we can make some changes as we need to. So uh, we'll, we'll talk about that in the budget, but you know, you know, Justin is all, you know, he's younger guy. So he's using all the high tech things. We got a QR code on the town website. I, you know, I don't know what happens when you. Click the QR code. I don't know what you're looking at. I guess you're looking at the slideshows from each of the forums.
We tried to get the uh, south coast former. Uh, Mariner to do a story on the town.
We could try to arrange. I don't think they're the ones we'd go to now. I think now we'd go to the anchor.
I know Justin had reached out to do several media outlet items. So if you have ideas or something, I mean. That's an opportunity for Justin to do that.
I don't, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't know that the south, whatever it's called now, the south coast mariner or something, I, you know. I've seen, I saw one in a convenience store and it had headlines of what were coming up at a few different towns upcoming town meetings. But you know, whether they do a lot of reporting well before the town meeting, which this would be like background stuff, I don't know. I mean, we'd have to interest somebody.
So if, if our, if, if we have a communications person and that person can write. They ought to be interviewing us and writing a story about what we're doing and what we're proposing and then giving that to the newspaper.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll talk to him about doing that. And I don't, does, does Chris Senior still do his little? Information show on one, four, three TV?
And they do, it's, they do the classic common, but it's not always Chris anymore. They do different segments of different things.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should do that. I, again, I don't know how much to. Uh, the viewership is. Now, I was invited to speak at the library as part of their monthly speaker series a couple of Monday nights ago. And one person showed up. You know, and the library apparently had publicized that. I, I had to cancel on them once in September, but that was apparently. But communicated that I, you know, I was going to be on, but nobody showed up. You know, we can only do so much. We can lead the horse to water, but they got to show up and, and drink. But any and all ideas, you know, we seem to be going away from old fashioned media of the newspaper. And in the old days, yes, we could have done something in the, who's, who's, who's speakers. Um, so anyway, but that's where we are. And uh, we're moving forward, we're making, you know, and again, from the meeting on the thirtieth, we're actually getting into concrete bylaw. In word article writing, so. Um, we look forward to it and you know, the plan, by the way, the plan for the. Board, I always thought about this is that Clark and I are members of the by law committee. But we're members of the planning board. So I gra- I'm probably going to plan to have Judge Cutler, if she's available, to come to our planning board meetings to present all the articles. Rather than me or Clark being an advocate for them. We're, we're going to advocate anyway, but I'd rather, I, I think it would be all, and I think you'd all be impressed by meeting Judge Cutler too, so.
All right, the first, the first round is, as Tom said, an easy kind of lift. Um, it's, it's not really content, uh, but improvements and organization.
Right, you know, I, 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 I have to applaud the diagnostic that we got. And I think it was circulated to all of you guys before that KP Dunn, they really went through that by law. With the fine tooth comb. Somebody's got something on in the background. I'm sorry. All right, um. I skipped out of order here, but the next thing was that we, we were going to talk about this last meeting and we should talk about it tonight is the master plan implementation committee. And the, 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 the committee, um. The committee has been responsible for a number, uh, it's, it's charges to make sure that the master plan's recommendations and objectives. Are actually followed through on. And it did take a lot of initiatives, including setting up originally the zoning by law working group. Um, since uh. The chair resigned last spring, it has kind of been more abundant and it hasn't met in a lot of months now, Lauren.
It last met in the summer.
Yeah, and then um. One of its other offshoots was the Elm Street Working Group. Who were working on redesigns for Elm Street, including the intersection of Elm, uh, margin and Cove. Um, that was. A part of our decision about the hotel project. And that committee, I guess, is dead or dying too, um.
They completed what they were doing and then they didn't, they were not recharged to continue working.
Yeah, so I, I, again, I don't want to make this a big giant political thing, but there just seems to be little interest from the select board. Of keeping any of these initiatives going, other than the by law committee, which now they have created under, under their supervision. Rather than being under the master plans committees supervision. So Lauren and I, Lauren and I have been brainstorming on this and what do we do? You know, what do we as a planning board? As being the statutory uh, authority over the master plan do? To revive the master plan implementation committee? Because, you know. Yes, it's under our statutory purview, but do we have the time to go through the master plan with a fine tooth comb? And push forward any initiatives and objectives? No, that's why a separate committee was created, same with zoning. All the other regular boards, parent boards have enough workload that it's hard for them to take on some of these new tasks. So. So the, the discussion for tonight is do we as a planning board, uh. Take this on to get this committee revived and. I have no problem working cooperative, we'll leave it to select board. It'll work a lot smoother if the select board's on board. But you know, if, if we have the statutory authority, do we move ahead on our own to get it going? Or, but do we let?
I mean, it's already something in place. Isn't it just a matter of getting a few more volunteers from committees and?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how many of them are left, Lauren. Who's left?
I'd have to go back and look again as to who um, refilled out their, their expiring terms. Um, there had been, I mean, yeah, there's, I want to say seven or eight seats on the committee, um, three of which are vacant at large. But most of the seats are based on from other groups.
Right.
Right. And Amy's been, Amy's been our liaison. Uh, Cassie is on that board, I think is citizen at large, and then she becomes the liaison of that committee to the zoning by law committee, but you know. Um, I think, I, I think she may need to soon cut back her workload a little bit because of family and work demands. So I, I, the first question is, is it something that this board wants to see revived and keep going? So that the master plan just doesn't end up dying and collecting dust on the shelf. Um, that's the first question.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, having been chairman of the master plan committee, I, we want to keep tho- those initiatives uh, moving. And um. Uh, the problem that we have is it got completed right when the pandemic started. Okay, so we did lose some, you know, kind of. It, uh, energy by distraction, but, but we're, we're coming out of that now. So I think it makes sense to, to try and pick up the, you know, dust things off and, and, and keep it going.
Okay, I mean, and, and the master plan commit, implementation committee spawned off. What, four working groups, Elm Street zoning, economics. And what was the other one? Oh, housing. They were working with the affordable housing. You know, so they were doing things and they were trying to prioritize. And I know Katie had a, you know, three year plan of, you know, step by step. Year after year, uh, objectives that you would try to implement. So, you know, there is.
You get a sidewalk.
We, yeah, we have to figure out what Katie, what Katie needs for salary to uh, to Jerry.
No, she's, she's happy in her retirement at the moment.
She wouldn't, she wouldn't touch it with a ten foot pole.
No, not with, and, and not without, and, and part of where she left is the, what she perceived as a lack of political support from the.
Right, the, the select board was not supportive. Uh, and assisting in providing the resources necessary for the actions to be taken. I mean, uh, you gotta have somebody on the select board who's willing to say, we will take an issue. Over this time period and work on finding the finances for it. We, and we also talked about finding a, a grant writer who would be able to write grants for the kinds of things that really make sense. Like the sidewalks and stuff like that. There's going to be an enormous amount of money coming out of. Uh, the state as a result of uh, um, the combination of COVID and the, the presidential election. So it'd be really sad if we. Don't attempt to acquire some of those resources.
And be ready, have shovel ready projects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and funny that you just mentioned sidewalks and I know Paul Grady. Paul Grady has taken a different point of view than myself and this board did with respect to the redesign of the Elm Cove margin intersection. Uh, uh, you know, our board seeing it as integral to softening the impact of that project, he's seeing it as something. Just for the developers benefit and they, and now he steered sidewalks into a completely different direction. And I get it and there's no problem with that, but I understand these, they're having trouble populating that committee. So part of it is, you know, getting people who are willing to spend the time and effort to get involved in this.
I don't, I, I.
Lauren had her hand up. Let me hear from Lauren.
So I just wanted to give you just a point of information, because when, when you first described it as dying on a shelf. Yeah, we don't want to see it die on a shelf, but I don't want you also to get the impression that it is the master plan. There's master plan implementation happening. It's just not under the umbrella of master plan implementation committee right now, because they're not active. And I, the distinction I want to make is that, for example, there's a lot of like resiliency efforts and grant work that I've been working on. Whether just in my department, coordinating with public works, like that's a one branch of something that we do. That's under the master plan that's happening and being carried out. It's not like there's nothing happening that was identified in the master plan, but it's these key projects that are identified as like the community priorities. Like, for example, how Elm Street and, you know, the zoning by law one were um, identified. And that was working with the master plan implementation committee to make the policy decisions and recommendations to go back to the select board. Because my job always, I have to be neutral. I, there's certain things that are pretty black and white. But like, when it comes to policy decisions and picking these sort of gray area projects, it's the direction that I get from. The committee or the, you know, the, the elected, it comes ultimately from the select board. To say, yes, we want to fund this, we want to move on this. Whereas like, you know, for example, we were looking at a couple of projects, master plan implementation committee. Looking at this zoning by law rewrite. We also looked at doing like, work with a consulting firm to look at design for three A and design for the village. Looking at different opportunities for consulting work. I can get those scopes of work. I can, I can get that ready at the table to be considered, but it's not my decision to move forward on whether we want to do that scope of work in the manner that it's written out. That's where we need a committee to get together and get behind this and say. Yes, we agree that based on these principles that this is what we want to recommend to the select board. It's like, that's where you get the politics to play that. I can only do so much. And then without a, a seated committee that's, you know, representing the community at large. That, you know, that's where we dovetail with the staff connection and move these things forward in a committee function.
Well, also Lauren, if, if the planning board as a board can, can help you provide encouragement to the selectmen. Uh, provide support uh, for your efforts. Um, then we can, we can work on, on doing that better, I think, than we have for, for your efforts.
Well, and you know, the select board also wants the cover of committees for making decisions going forward. You know, this committee that you just mentioned, Tom, about sidewalks and roads. You know, that is a direct outgrowth of what's going to happen at town meeting next week, where if you look through the war. Um, that issue with regard to improvements to sidewalks from um, areas um, south of Route three A. Uh, to three A and ultimately connecting to the schools. The select board has deferred to the sidewalk committee on that. And then that's the committee that's looking for people now. And actually, that committee is. Um, tasked with having a, a planning board representative, either a planning board or one other board representative on that. So, you know, like to, to Clark's point, if there's ways for us to get our point across to other committees. And, and ultimately from the committees to the select board. Um, you know, we have to look at multiple ways of doing that.
All right, well, I, I, I hear a consensus that we want to go forward with this and. First step, rather than try to go off on our own, is to try to work with the select board and get their support of getting this going again. So perhaps what we can do, uh, I don't know, if anyone wants to volunteer to first write a letter, putting in writing what our wishes are to the select board. And then when that letter is delivered, we request a meeting with them. So that we publicly put it to them on Zoom and television, you know. Please get behind this and please get this committee revived. Um, does anyone?
You're chairman of the, of the um, planning board.
I, I don't want to add to my, I don't want to add to my workload of Lauren's without.
Writing letters chairman, um, I think is.
I can sign somebody else's magnum opus. I, I, I have no pride of authorship, but. You know, Lauren and I got a lot to do too. I mean, I don't mind taking it on, but I, if somebody, but I also think it's going to require a face to face meeting with them. In a public forum, because Kevin's right, they're very political. They want cover for a lot of things that they do and uh. Um, I think we should do that. So if anybody wants to volunteer to. Frame this in a letter, let me know. If not, I'll put something together.
So, so Tom, is, is the letter just simply, dear select board?
Dear select board, the planning board strongly. Uh, the planning board has recently discussed the master plan implementation committee and the fact that it has not met for some time. We strongly believe that provides value to the community.
It's way too many words. You just write and say that the planning board would like to have a meeting with the select board. To talk about the continued development of the master plan that.
I don't have to put, yeah, I don't have to put anything that short in writing. So Lauren, if you want to set up a meeting between our board and the select board on this topic. Please, please get that going.
I get that cute into a select board agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Two, fun on a Tuesday night. It's the only free night of the week. Um, okay.
You don't even have to be the person that does that. You, you.
No, you're the, you're, you're the.
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy.
You're the vice chair of the master plan implementation committee.
Indeed, indeed.
All right, um. Something that was just said reminded me of something else that came out of our minutes of the zoning by law committee, and I brought them here, so I'd remind myself. Two things that the planning board also has to put on its horizon. Uh, number one, one of the proposals in the bylaw is to move. Admin, uh, administrative, more like application type of stuff out of the bylaw and into regulations. And the proposal is to have all the land use boards have regulations in a single volume. Like the state and the federal government do for user friendly, I guess. We're not on, we don't have all the other boards on boarded that yet. I haven't even brought it to their attention yet. But the planning board can certainly do regulations. We have regulations. So. Uh, Judge Cutler said, we don't have to do anything at town meeting to do this. We've identified the sections that would move out. So at some point after January. We have to plan a public hearing to amend our regulations to move this stuff out. And it can, we can have them as regulations and be ready to go so that when the bylaw is amended and taking this stuff out. We have the regulations behind it. The other thing that came up in our discussion and the meeting on the thirtieth was design regulations. Or guide, well, right now we have harbor.
Three A, I think specifically.
We, we have harbor and village design guidelines. And at the forum, the first forum we had, when we talked about both of those places, especially the village. We heard quite a bit of feedback from members of the public about three A and extending design guidelines to three A. And once again, the comments about a particular new building and its lack of attractiveness in the eyes of many was brought up. And so at the meeting at the thirtieth, uh, Dave Farrag of the zoning by law committee brought this up. And there is some work, I think Clark pointed out, there is a level of work that needs to be done in bringing design guidelines to three A. And then there was the thought about, should they be guidelines? Should they be regulations? Is there a huge difference? There may be. But um.
Well, just to jump in, Tom.
Yeah.
Uh, through three A south, uh, from Beechwood South is going to be re- completely redone as a part of uh, Mass DOT project. Um.
For the street.
As well as um, Lauren, we've, we've contracted for a redesign of the, of the north section as well. I wonder if. I wonder if if um the the progress of that redesign and engineering project and the actual changes. Um, wouldn't be a good forum for uh thinking about the guidelines, I mean, the three A South is going to be transformed substantially, it's.
Yeah, the roadway, the roadways.
To understand that and and integrate that with with that future reality, I think, is uh going to be useful and important.
Okay, no, I agree, it's the roadways that are going to change, not so much the buildings, but yeah, no, I guess the. The 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 simplest sentiment that's being expressed is, oh, the new building on three A is ugly and we should not let that happen again. Okay, so we talked about, and it was in, I'm looking in the minutes about perhaps forming some subcommittee to look at this. With Dave Farrag of the bylaw committee, since he expressed the most interest in this. And maybe a couple of members of this committee, I don't know if there's anybody who wants to take on the task. Of of thinking about design guidelines for three A, and it may be. As simple as saying, well, what we want in the village and the harbor should be on three A, a colonialish. Style design, uh, you know, I don't know if you can do that with a box store like a supermarket, but. Somebody needs to do the groundwork. To get that ready to propose, and it would be in the form of either an expansion of our. Boards guidelines that this board would vote on, or. We turn all the guidelines into a regulation, again, this board would vote on. Um, not tied to town meeting necessarily, but it is a topic that the public. In what little sample we have seems to be hot to try them. So would anybody like to? To volunteer to work on an effort to look at three A and design?
Well, I'm interested, I just um i- in terms of, I mean, I would jump into any subcommittee on that.
Okay, all right, and and we'll have Dave as well, and maybe one other person from this board, it's ultimately the passage of anything will fall on this board, but. I saw you begin to volunteer, Amy.
For writing the letter to the?
No, for for participating in an effort to bring design guidelines to three A.
So I was going to say something totally outrageous, which is, I think Clark ought to write a proposal. To somebody who will fund him for a year to be able to write the the uh design guidelines on behalf of the town.
How did you do the village and design ones in two thousand eighteen?
Um, yeah, tho- those were what Angus put together back, you know, ten years earlier, we just.
Who's Angus?
The engineer.
Was our planner who did the village by law changes, ten years earlier. It just took us ten years to uh actually vote them in. Make them legit.
Well, let me ask, is this, is it really, would it really be rocket science? To extend those guidelines to three A?
Well, I'm not sure, it's a different, it's a different kind of environment, more car.
All right, all right, that's that's why I asked that question.
That are in the the other guidelines that might.
All right.
Might carry over, but you know, it's a different environment.
Okay, then question two is, does it need outside expertise to help us do this? What can we do it in? Lauren, you tell me.
Want to do it right, or do you want to do it half ass, or do you want to do it wrong?
I I think that it would be a good use of consultant expertise.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, then 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 for tonight's purposes, let me see if you can talk to Chris about. Finding budget, I would assume it's not a giant project.
Right, I will do some research on that.
So that would, that would mean.
In what the consultant does.
Right, so that would mean coming out of the bylaw committee, we want a consultant for this, we want a consultant to review our parking rigs to make sure they're up to the state of the art. And the larger one is commissioning somebody to look at frontage. With examples.
Scenarios.
Where where if we, with examples, an empty lot, an empty plot of land in town. Where do we keep fifty feet, it's be this, if we went to a hundred, hundred fifty feet, it will be that. So that, those are the three budgetary things from the bylaw committee that we need to, we need to find the money for.
Yes.
Okay. And the only other thing about the design guidelines is, maybe the ones we actually have. Remember, we got caught with fifty five South Main Street with their innovative, and we got a modern design, maybe we. Tweak that word, that one provision that says come up with an innovative design. Maybe we mean innovative in the environmental sense, but not the design sense that we don't want.
And why don't we, why don't we ask uh M A P C? To. Write a grant to help us do this.
They need money too.
They, but they get money from the state, that's how they.
Yes, I know, we're we're we we're looking at M A P C for a lot of potential grants, particularly what arose out of Monday night's forum is to. To do the environmental stuff, because they've already done so much of the work, and we'd make logical sense if they, we we uh got them to. Take their toolkit and then coacidize it and give us nice cohesive, climate resilient regulations. Yeah, and I I agree, I I agree we use them, but if we don't get a grant, we have to pay for it.
So, but I thought we had the folks coming from Provincetown to work on at least the harbor, right? That's the first part. Isn't that right?
We have a a coastal zone management grant award for Woods Hole Group and.
Right.
Resiliency work in the harbor, I wish I think you might be referencing. The M A P C grant, they actually have an open call for proposals right now, um, for technical assistance. Right now, they're really all um prioritizing uh projects that enhance equity. And also um regional collaboration projects, so I don't think that something like updating design guidelines for our commercial corridor would be a. Very strongly competitive project for them right now, it's not to say that they wouldn't take something on, but I will also say that we, I think, have. Some little silos of funding that had been allocated for this zoning work, and if this is going to fall under that zoning objective, we may be able to do that, so let me just. Go to the drawing board, get some ballpark figures on what we're looking at here, um. And I'll be, I'll, and then I'll talk to Christine here on what we might do for funding.
Okay, good. Um, regarding the MBTA initiative that you mentioned before, um, perhaps you plan for that for January fourth? After fifty five South Main Street, we, in fact, fifty five South Main is the only thing on the agenda, we could do that. And if we do have it on that agenda, I would invite the affordable housing committee to it.
Okay.
Um, you know, that's something that if we have to zone for that, um, what we have to do is zone for it, we don't actually have to build it, but. We need to understand all the implications, um, I learned the other day, maybe other people knew this, because there'd been some chatter about that the penalties for not complying. Aren't that great, we would, we wouldn't get grants that we normally get. But then I read something that towns are being punished by their. Their subsidized housing, their housing authorities budgets are being cut. That's this, they have two carrots in the enforcement of this mandate. Uh, housing cho- housing choice, it's called. Uh, by saying, you know, you'll get these grants or you'll you'll be denied these grants if you don't, and they have one stick, and. I wasn't aware of the stick before, and I don't know, I'd asked the question of our housing authority's been hammered, but. In at least eight towns who've indicated they don't want to comply with this new mandate, their housing authorities are looking at ten percent budget cuts. So. You know, i- if that's the case. This town is going to have to look at that mandate perhaps more closely and more seriously than we have to date. I mean, on the bylaw committee, we had a presentation by the affordable housing committee, the town has a housing production plan, we are committed to. Pursuing diversity of housing, you know, multifamily housing. But not along the lines that the MBTA mandate is doing, so um. You know, Lauren, I I appreciate your update, it bring that, invite that committee to the meeting and, you know. The the by, I'll invite the bylaw committee, we'll invite the bylaw committee too, because we were seriously got to think about. How we're going to do this in the long term or the short term. Um, you know, we are going to have to show. Uh, compliance, I think fairly shortly, right? Sometime during twenty twenty three.
We have to have a, an interim plan for compliance, which could just be as much as we're going to continue to study some parcels and zoning and all blah by the end of January.
Yeah. Okay, well, as long as we don't have to come up with a bylaw by the spring town meeting.
No, you would need a bylaw in place at this point, um, by the end of the calendar year of twenty twenty four.
Oh, okay. But um, again, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't appreciate that stick until the other day, so I think everybody.
I I read the story too, it did something.
And I think everybody's been casually saying that we don't, yeah, those who've been casually saying, like, we might not need to comply, including myself. Uh, perhaps need to rethink it. Because even though our housing authority project is small. Uh, a budget cut from the state to our housing authority would be, would be devastating on them, I'm sure, so we we would want to avoid that at all costs, but.
I would put forward, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
I would just put forward that any looking at three A design and application of regulations to that. Be inclusive of looking at the MBTA. Development and implications around there for development. I think putting those two separate. Just will delay things, and I think the Route three A and the um MBTA station, which has a parking lot right on it. Um, should be one in the same, and I'm just kind of putting that out there, I know we finished discussion, the Route three A thing, but. Now that we're moving into the MBTA territory here of discussion. Um, I think they should be combined and look at both of those things, and it allows you to move forward the MBTA. Discussion in the Route three A for which we know it's on there together.
We do have a T O D, a transportation oriented district there already.
No, but I I I think if whatever our zoning by law is going to do about, whether it's diversity of housing under our terms or. Diversity of housing under the MBTA mandates terms. You know, we're going to have more residential development in parts of three A that we don't have now, and I, it's important, I think, to have design guidelines for that. So that we do not get. You know, quote unquote, ugly, blocky apartment buildings rather than something that's a little bit more tasteful, so I think Kevin's points won't take in that. So all of these, you know, there's all these things eventually come together, and we have to just keep all these strands under control, so. All right, um, anything else of a general nature about what we are doing and what's going on that anybody wants to bring up or discuss? Since we're not going to meet next week, this would be the time.
I'll make a a motion to adjourn, Tom, that's not presumptive.
No, as long as nobody wants to talk about anything else of what's going on, but otherwise, you know, um. I will, I will second that motion and uh thank you all for your work during this year, and I hope you all have a good holiday, so. Take a roll, take a roll call, uh.
But Clark, you or I?
Um, Kelly and I. Amy.
I, sorry.
G comes after C.
I was thinking about the three A.
All right, well, we'll make you a volunteer in the committee, so. All right, K- Kevin, I.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
Enjoy the party, we're not invited to, thank you.
Just play tie.
Okay, Lauren, thank you again for your help and.
Thank you, Lauren, all your hard work this year, good to have you.
Thank you, and again.
Everyone.
Bylaw committee, the nineteenth, if you're interested, otherwise we'll see you on January fourth.
Special town meeting is on Monday.
Oh, special town meeting, yes. Yes.
Yes, December twelfth at the high school.
All right, see you there.
Good night.
Bye bye, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.